The January 5th, 2021 meeting of the Planning Commission Working Group. Ms. Cook, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, thank you. Mr. O'Connor?
President.
Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member. Ms. Leverens? Ms. Leverens is an at-large member. Mr. Haldeman?
Here.
Mr. Haldeman represents the Berkeley District. Mr. Polster? Mr. Polster represents the Jamestown District. Dr. Rose? Dr. Rose represents the Roberts District. Mignell?
Present.
Mignell represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Crop?
Here.
Mr. Crop represents the Powhatan District and is Chair of the Planning Commission. Ms. Wartman, I believe, will be joining us a little bit later in the meeting, but we do have a quorum.
Okay. Thanks very much, Ms. Cook. And just a reminder, as we progress this evening, again, about the raise the hand icon. And there was also a resolution in our packet that allows us to do this electronically. And just in a brief summary, on September 8th, 2020, the Board readopted the continuity of government ordinance, which, under certain circumstance, permits this committee to conduct today's meeting by electronic or telephonic means without a quorum of members physically present. May I have a motion for the adoption of that resolution for this afternoon's meeting?
I'm moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I assume that was in favor, too.
It was.
Okay. All righty. Now, although we don't have a dedicated public comment period, there are opportunities for the public to express their opinions, whether it be through email or service mail or contacting staff. Ms. Cook, were there any comments prior to today's meeting?
No, none were received.
Okay, thank you. And since you have the floor, if you would like to address the staff and the consultants for introductions, thank you.
Yes, yeah, thank you. I am Ellen Cook, Principal Planner, and joining me today from James City County are Paul Holt, Tammy Rosario, Thomas Weisong, Tori Haynes, Tom Leininger, Jose Higuerro, John Reisinger, Terry Costello, and Julie Northkotbosen. Also joining us are our partners in this comprehensive plan update, our consultants Todd Gordon from EPRPC and Leeann King from Clarion Associates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda are the minutes of our November 9th, 2020 Planning Commission Working Group meeting. Are there any corrections or edits or comments about those meetings? If not, those minutes, if not, may I have a motion?
This is Julie. Move approval.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Well, the first major work item on our agenda is land use chapter materials. And I will turn it over to Mr. Weisong, happily.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon to the Planning Commission Working Group. I want to comment on the great discussion at our meeting last year on December 21st. Tonight, we are hoping to continue that great discussion and finalize the list of land use applications to proceed for review as part of the comp plan process. And before we dive into the future land use map spreadsheet discussion and voting, staff thought it would be helpful for the listening public who may have missed our previous meeting to give just a brief overview of the spreadsheet. No changes have been made since your previous meeting, so much of this will sound familiar. The spreadsheet contains the applications for land use designation changes that are certain to move forward for review, as well as potential applications that could proceed with the working group's recommendation. And based on the meeting last time, there are currently 18 land use designation change applications that are certain to move forward for review and consideration. Three of these are property owner-initiated applications, and 15 have been initiated by either staff or the working group. And as you may recall, we were able to work through the working group-initiated applications at our last meeting, as well as two of the Scenario B items. And this means that tonight we'll be focusing on the final category, which is the remaining Scenario B potential application. These potential applications are the result of staff comparing the land use types shown on Scenario Map B to the currently adopted future land use map in order to identify areas of difference between the two. And similar to the last meeting, staff's hope is that the working group will discuss each application and participate in a straw vote for each one, with Ms. Cook calling the roll call. However, since we do have two sections to get to after land use, staff thinks it would be best to get right into the land use application discussion rather than have staff give another recap of the entire spreadsheet. And regarding the spreadsheet, each application or potential application is identified by a unique ID number within the spreadsheet and shown on the attached future land use map, which is on the screen right now. And in addition to information about location, zoning, and the current or potential land use designation, the spreadsheet includes an initial assessment of the application's consistency with the six key ideas from the preferred scenario framework. And finally, while a land use designation change is the most direct way to address land use matters for a specific parcel, there are other policy options that can do so on a broader scale. These include changing the description of land use designations, such as recommended density, development and design, revising policies within the technical report, and adding or enhancing the GSAs and so on. So there may be proposed designation changes that are not recommended tonight, but that certainly doesn't mean that it's the end of the line for discussion. And I'll pause here to see if we have any questions, but if not, we can begin with ID number 20 within the spreadsheet.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Thomas. Go ahead.
Great. So map ID number 20, this is the first Scenario B difference within the spreadsheet. It's described as the parcel northeast of Forge Road and the Richmond Road intersection. This property is currently within the PSA, and it's designated for a low-density residential. The proposed land use, in order to align with the Scenario B map, would be rural lands and outside of the PSA. And this proposal does align with one of the six key themes from the framework. And with that, I'll turn it over to you all for discussion.
And, you know, just to clarify, these will all move forward, right, Thomas? Unless there's any motion and vote to not move them forward?
So what we were hoping for is that for each of these, you would vote to proceed or to not proceed. Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you. Ms. Leverens?
Yes, thank you. This seems like a pretty good idea to me, so I would vote to proceed with this one. Do I need to do a motion to that effect?
We will have to do a motion. I see Tim also has his hand up, but if you wanted to make a motion, we can, we won't vote on it until everybody has a discussion.
Sure. Let me just get it on the table and vote to move this one forward.
Okay. Mr. O'Connor?
Just for staff, just a clarification, is this parcel? Sorry, I'll back up. There are a number of parcels for sale on Forge Road currently. And one of them is being marketed as having $500,000 economic incentive on it. Is that on this parcel, or is it the one that is adjacent to that further down Forge Road?
I don't have that information in front of me currently. I can ask other folks on the call, perhaps, if they're aware of how it's being marketed. But that may be something to follow up on later, for sure.
Now, this is the... Go ahead.
Apologies, though. Go ahead. Sorry.
I was just going to say, this, it looked like the owners were the cotrels. And so I think if it's the parcel I'm thinking of, it's the one nearby, the one you referred to, Tim, the $500,000 incentive?
Right.
I'm not going to swear to that, but I, that's my understanding.
All right. And just the reason why I'm asking is, you know, I think, I think everybody's in agreement that Forge Road is, is an area that we want to protect as, you know, as, as what it is in, in some form or fashion. And my, I guess my question, my concern is, is the, is the parcel that's adjacent to it that, that Rich and I are talking about, that I believe has a JCC economic incentive on it? I'm just trying not to set up conflict. So, you know, I'm happy to agree to move this one forward. I would just like, you know, before we have a final discussion, that we understand what's on the piece of property next to it? Because if there's an economic incentive and there's a reason to develop that, then it seems incongruous to, to keep this one as a, as a rural land agricultural type piece. So I would just, so I just throw that out. So when we do have a full discussion later on, we know what's adjacent to that.
That's a good point. And Ellen, you were going to make a comment, I believe, a couple of minutes ago?
Oh, yes, thank you. I, I don't know for sure, but I, I believe it would be the one adjacent or, or a different one. This one being currently designated a low-density residential would maybe think it was unlikely to be this one, but we're happy to look into that, like you say, before the further discussion and decision.
Okay.
All right. Ellen, I can, I can send you the, the link to the sales piece. So maybe you can, if it's got a parcel ID number, we can identify it more readily. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, there's a motion to approve moving this forward and turn it over to Ellen for the roll call.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Crop?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Ms. Leverens?
Aye.
Mignell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Dr. Rose?
Aye.
And I do not believe Ms. Wartman is here yet, but just to check, Ms. Wartman? Okay. So this parcel would move forward for exploration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thomas?
Great. And for number 21, you all actually, excuse me, you all actually already voted to proceed with this at the previous meeting. So for the map, the next one we're actually looking at is number 22. This is also a Scenario B difference. It's described as the parcels adjacent to Colonial Heritage on Richmond Road. This property is within the PSA. It's currently designated as community commercial, and the proposed land use would be mixed use. And this aligns with one of the six key themes, and I'll turn it back over to you all for discussion.
Mr. O'Connor?
And so just to clarify, this is the parcel that surrounds the, the old shopping center where the Brass Shop is, correct?
I believe so. I'm not as familiar with the Brass Shop, but it is at an old commercial shopping center area.
Right.
Yep. Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. So the Brass Shop was an old icon that burned to the ground last year or the year prior. So, you know, I'm not in favor of, of changing this designation and for the reason being that I think it really would limit the potential redevelopment of that shopping center. So that shopping center predates any buffer requirements, stormwater requirements, any of those pieces. And I'm afraid that if we would downzone or downzone the land use designation for future comp plans, that we might prevent a good redevelopment of that whole site. So I'm in favor. I think it's an appropriate place to be, a commercial application. It's in keeping with what's there. So, you know, whether it's mixed use or community commercial, yeah, I'm happy to have that discussion. But I think, I think it's really important to look at the potential of that rest of that shopping center and how it could be made more current in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Polster?
If I understood, number 22, it's, it's not only the Colonial Town Plaza site, but it's also the Honda Place, too, that we're talking about. And we're actually looking at that entire strip, which is generally business, general business. And so I am in favor of the mixed use designation for the following two reasons. Number one, the Colonial Town Plaza site is designated as a foreign trade zone, number 20, which means that there's a tax break associated with that, similar to the businesses up in Stonehouse. I would like to see staff establish the corridor language for mixed use in the same way they do that for Anderson Corner or for the Barnesville Corner. And hopefully, they do for the Crocker Interchange, that describes what we want. Because we're talking about the entire strip from Centerville to Norwich that essentially becomes mixed use in this area. And we ought to have some standards about that. The other interesting thing is that we're going to see it when we get to the Colonial Heritage business tomorrow. But adjacent to that Colonial Town Plaza is a commercial plot that belongs to Colonial Heritage that is at least master planned for a shopping center and other businesses of that type. And so I, I don't think we just want to have development or redevelopment on that corridor without some set of standards. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Julie?
Yes, I totally agree with Frank. I think we do need to develop the standards. But I'm going to side with Tim on this and say that I would prefer not to see that changed to mixed use because that opens the door to residential development, even as a small proportion of that. And I really don't think we need more residential development on Richmond Road. Thanks.
Thank you. Rob?
Yeah, if it's okay, I want to ask a question based to Tim. I'm just trying to understand why changing it to mixed use would prevent the redevelopment of that area.
No, I'm sorry. I wasn't, I wasn't trying to imply that. So I'm, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we preserve it for some sort of commercial and, or mixed use. It doesn't, what the final designation is, I'm not so worried about. But I do want to make sure that we keep all options open to allow that place to be redeveloped and, and brought up to current building standards.
Thank you. Was that, did that answer everything, Rob?
I think so.
Okay. Frank, did you have another point that you wanted to make?
I'm sorry, it didn't roll from my handle.
Oh, that's okay. Anybody else? I, I agree with Frank's proposal that we should definitely develop a, a plan and a narrative description for what we want this area to look like. But I am less inclined to change it from community commercial to mixed use for the reasons cited about more residential going in there. And it just seems to me like that, that strip, there's a car wash across the street, there's the automobile dealership, there's, you know, to me, there's, there's so much commercial already in place and room for additional commercial to go in there. I, I sort of hold with keeping the designation as it is, but definitely developing a narrative for what the expectations of what this corridor will look like and maybe establish some standards.
Barbara, I agree with you as well, since I live right by there. It needs to be commercial and, and nicer commercial to be rebuilt, but certainly no homes. So we do need to have some standards.
Anybody else?
Rich, I'm sorry. Just, just a comment. I hadn't really thought about it until I was listening to Frank. But, you know, this, this could be a good place to consider, you know, if there were a redevelopment of that area, to consider some, some, some residential pieces. Understanding that, you know, we potentially have, you know, the assisted living facility moving in, you know, two, two, 300 yards away. So there, there could be a really good opportunity to make a walkable community here with the residential, the commercial, and, you know, a new employer with the assisted living facility. So, you know, again, I, I like Frank's idea, you know, of making sure we have some, some standards there. So something to consider.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, if you take a look at number 30 and what's being proposed, and once again, we're talking about everything from Centerville to Norwich. What's being proposed in 30 are those two pottery parcels going to RHD. And it's not a bad idea for the very reason that Tim talked about, of being a walkable place, to someplace to get groceries or a pharmacy, or even walk to work for that community center. So the question of how you define that mixed use, and, and frankly, putting those two parcels that we're talking in 30 are perfect for an RHD in terms of it's on a major artery, it's by a lotto, it's close to shopping things. And so the question becomes, what is the percentage that you want to look at for residential that would accommodate affordable housing or some other type of residential that would make sense to that corridor? And right now, we shouldn't be just looking at these two parcels as a standalone. We need to look at all those parcels, for example, 30, which we're going to get to at the end.
Rob?
Just, I guess, add on to that, if 22 moves to mixed use and it's right next to 30, wouldn't a better idea be to leave 30 as mixed use and figure out what the entire plan for that area is?
That's a, that's a good point, linking those two with, with the vision of what that area is going to develop into. Frank?
I was just going to make a motion that we just go forward and have staff take a look at this thing and come back to us at some other point.
Yeah, I was going, actually leaning in that same direction. It sounds like there's, there are enough ideas out there that it would be worth moving it forward. And, and also, when, when it goes to the next step, to take a look at the surrounding parcels in a little more detail. To Tim's point, the CCRC and so on and so forth, just to see how, how everything in the surrounding area could be impacted or could benefit, depending on which way we go. So we have a motion on the floor to move this forward. Any other discussion?
Yeah, this is Julie. I'm just wondering if we could, could lump number 30 in on this also? Because the discussion, in a way, has included that, just to save ourselves some time down the road.
Yeah, I'm agreeable.
I'm agreeable to that as well. Any objections to doing that, to bundling 22 and 30 and moving them forward? No objections? Okay. Ellen, would you mind calling the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Crop?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Ms. Leverens?
Aye.
Ms. Null?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye, and Jenny's came in.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Welcome.
Dr. Root?
Aye.
Ms. Wartman?
Aye.
Thank you. So that would be items 22 and 30 moving forward for exploration.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weisong?
Great. And you all had already voted to not proceed with number 23 at your previous meeting, which means for the map, we are moving on to number 24. This is also a Scenario B difference. It's described as the parcel adjacent to Long Hill Road in Centerville. It's described as the parcel adjacent to Long Hill Road in Centerville near War Hill Sports Complex. This property is within the PSA. It's currently designated for low density residential and the proposed land use would be moderate slash high density residential. And this aligns with one of the six key themes from the scenario framework. And I'll turn it back over to you all.
Thank you. Any, any discussion? Rob, just checking to make sure that your hand.
Yeah, it was up from before, but I do have a question and I apologize, I'm going to be a little naive here and maybe asking this question. But because this property has an owner, a private owner, what, what happens when you move a property from low density to moderate density? How does that impact the owner or is the owner sort of asked for something like this?
I'll defer to, to staff, either Ellen or Thomas for a response on that. But remember, this is the, just changing a future land use designation. It wouldn't have any impact on current zoning. But, but I'll defer to either, either Thomas or Ellen on that.
Sure, so I can take a crack at it and Ellen can certainly jump in. But essentially, when you change the, if we're going to change the land use designation for the property, that would affect potential future development. So for example, if somebody wanted to come in and propose to do a legislative change to a rezoning or do a special use permit, one of the key things that staff looks at is the land use designation that's currently adopted. And we would do our review in part based on that. So the immediate impact wouldn't be felt on the property owner. It would be in the future if there was a proposal that would impact the way staff reviews that. So it doesn't change the current zoning. It doesn't take away existing ability to develop. It's more of a long-term impact.
Can I, can I follow on with that just for a second? As far as getting the, notifying the owners, the first, the two meetings that we have in March as the Planning Commission Working Group are to discuss the land use changes, but then it'll have to go to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. And I, I just want to verify from staff, at what point the landowners are told that this recommendation has been made to change the land use designation and there'll be a public hearing or, or whatever on, on a certain date. Just for clarification, would you mind outlining that?
Sure, so once the list is finalized today, staff's going to start putting together, it's a letter that we're going to send directly to the property owner and we will be doing that in the next three weeks to let them know that this is being considered. There is a proposed change to the land use designation for your property. Here's the county website for more information. And here's staff, so number, please give us a call with any questions.
Okay.
So we will be letting individual property owners who are affected by the proposed change, they'll be notified within the next three to four weeks.
And they'll be notified well before any public hearing takes place as this moves forward, obviously, because the March, the March meetings won't be public hearings. They'll just be meetings to discuss these changes, if I understand it correctly.
For the first part, yes, we will be notifying property owners in the next two to three weeks because we want them to know what's going on as soon as possible to get their feedback and help explain, you know, what's being proposed and what this means and what it doesn't mean.
Okay.
And, yes.
Thank you. Frank had his hand up and then Ginny also. So Frank, if you wanted to start?
Yeah, I'm strongly opposed to changing the land designation and having this thing go forward. And there's several reasons. If you take a look at what the consultant team is, and I understand that this is not a zoning piece, but it's, it's the argument I've been making since September and October that it is the first step in moving that direction. And currently, it's rural residential, which means there is a minimum lot size of three acres, period. As soon as we open the door up to either medium or high, what the consultant is saying, that we're going to probably have an increase of 3,613 population, which I think is absolutely low for the development of that. You could put another colonial heritage inside that place for it. And just for some scale, when we approved the Oakland Point for RHD R5 apartments, it was 12 acres. And on those 12 acres, you put 126 units with a population of 308. And so we're talking about 311 acres of land between Long Hill and Centerville. Second point is both the historical triangle and the consultants team have talked about the, the traffic problems that we currently have on Centerville and whether or not we get the third piece for the development of Long Hill is the same thing. So all we're doing is just opening up the doors to put more population in an area and more density. That doesn't make any sense to me and I'm just in favor of keeping it the way it is, period.
And before I call on Ginny, just because you, you brought this up, just, you know, this is, this is sort of the dilemma that we are faced with. And that is to say, all right, if the public input in surveys and so on and so forth said, put more density inside the PSA to preserve the areas outside the PSA, you know, there, these are the types of decisions that are going to be facing us is to say, all right, you know, is this consistent with the citizen survey results? And if we don't increase the proposed, or not the proposed, but the land use from low density to medium or high density, then where is this extra density going to go within the PSA? And I'm just, I'm not advocating, I'm just throwing it out there that, that this is what makes it difficult to weigh the options. That said, I'll defer to Ginny, who had her hand up for a while. And then I see Jack also has his hand up.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the subject of notifying the property owners and make myself representative of most normal human beings who probably don't have a clue of what changing a land use designation means as opposed to a zoning or some other term. So I just, I just really hope that the letter that you send to people will provide really clear explanations of what the implications of changing a land use designation are as opposed to zoning or, or something else. Because I find the whole thing extremely confusing, to be blunt about it. And, and looking at the property system, which I proved today in my email exchange, does not always, it's not always intuitive what, what we're talking about. So anyway, just begging for really simple, clear language to the property owners. Thanks.
Excellent point. There's a lot of, a lot of, what almost appears like conflicting terminology between a zoning and a land use, and a land use designation and so on. So thanks, Ginny.
I find it really confusing.
Jack and then Tim and then Frank. So Jack, if you want to kick off?
Sure, thanks, Rich. In answer to your question of where will we put the higher density that is to be guided inside the PSA? My answer to that is I feel no obligation to do that. I know that the two scenarios were based on 120,000 population and the reason for doing that was to create an apples to apples comparison with regard to the fiscal impact and transportation impact and such. I realize the consultants had to do that from, you know, for the integrity of the comparisons. But I don't think that necessarily means we have to create a land use map that will accommodate 120,000 people. And even if we did build out this section 24 according to the scenario analysis, that wouldn't necessarily mean that there wouldn't be more development in the rural lands, that you could get both, which would be a real disaster, of course. And I shouldn't say, of course, in my opinion. And so I'm solidly in Frank's camp on this. This is not the right place, if, if any exists, for a higher density residential development. Long Hill Road is already jammed. Centerville Road, there's pressure to expand Centerville Road already. I don't know if some of this traffic would feed into the War Hill Sports Complex, whether it'd be connected or not, but it would be closed. I don't see how this fits in to any of our five themes, unless you tried to put affordable housing in there. That's one of our themes, but it doesn't hit community character. It doesn't hit, you know, protect nature and that, that sort of thing. So I think our fellow residents, at least the overwhelming majority of them would be very surprised and disappointed to learn that we are pushing for more dense residential development right across the street from Ford's Colony.
Tim? I think you're muted, Tim.
Sorry about that, thanks, Rich. I guess I have a slightly different view because, you know, when we, when you look at this parcel 24, you know, it's, when we talk about these connected and these sort of living communities, you know, it's near to two parks. It's near to two schools. It's near to the police station. It'll be near a fire department. You know, if, if we ever put more administrative buildings over there for, for the county, it's near to that. You know, I think there's a lot of pluses that could be made, you know, with this parcel here that while it, while it may increase, you know, some traffic on, on Long Hill there. I mean, it would keep it close and not require people to commute a far distance to, to get to a number of things. So, you know, I, I, I recognize that, you know, people would prefer to see trees there. But, you know, I, I just, I don't think that, you know, three acre lots are realistic in, in this market and this economy and, and what people are really truly looking for is evidenced by, you know, there's other communities on, on Centerville Road. So again, I think to put that, you know, near to some bus routes and near to all those other public services, it could be a real win for, for those folks who, who wouldn't normally be in some moderately priced housing adjacent to, to all those amenities of the county.
Thank you, Tim. And before I go to Frank, I see Ellen had a comment. So Ellen and then Frank.
Yes, thank you. I guess first just procedurally would want to mention, staff could certainly evaluate some of this. There's, there's currently four parcels listed there for, I can't remember the acreage. Mr. Poulster just handily gave you, but the, the working group could, if they decided to explore this later, narrow it down to a smaller amount of the acreage that's there. So just wanted to throw that out there if, if that would help any of you in thinking this through. It's not an all or nothing as far as all that acreage versus, you know, potentially a smaller amount of that acreage. We could notify the property owners, but then later on, you all could decide, you know, if you did want to do that, to do a smaller amount. And then secondly, I think as far as the, the public input theme, I think it was the affordable housing that was, or the opportunity for affordable housing, that was the category that staff had indicated in this spreadsheet as being consistent. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen. Frank?
Yeah, I guess two, two points is, is one, your comment, which is, is I think as a policy, we actually are trying to put density inside of the PSA. And the conundrum is, is well, that's what we say and we want to protect it. But, but on the other hand, when you go through the scientific survey and those three questions, and two of them are really about growth and you do an analysis of that, people don't want to see more growth. I mean, they flat don't. I mean, and they keep on telling us that. And so to, to Jack's point is, I'm not compelled to try to get 200 or 120,000 folks in a land use map today. Maybe in five years, but not today. The, the second point, and you're going to hear this on the one, I think it's 28 or 29, is that's an RHD and the opportunity to have affordable housing. Fooly. They're going to put townhouses and single family homes on those 19 acres. And, and there's nothing to say that with 300 acres here that you would see any affordable housing, since we don't have a policy. And so once again, well, we got a policy. When the legislature decides to have impact fees so that the county can ask to have affordable housing in there, maybe then. But the notion of affordable housing by putting the zoning in there is bogus. And by the way, Centerville has a problem in the historical triangle for traffic from Long Hill up to Richmond Road. So all you're doing is making it worse on top of the Long Hill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holt, I had a question or comment, rather.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. I really just wanted to echo some of what Ellen shared earlier. As, as usual and as always, she's right on point. You know, I think from my perspective, you know, the process that you all are following now in deciding which of these areas to explore more and which ones to sort of leave as is on the designation, is a really important step. You know, we said early on, and I think you all echoed, these aren't the final decisions on any of these. I think all of these are right now sort of exploratory questions that will allow us to move forward to the next vitally important public input stage and reaching out to the property owners. You know, we, we said earlier, comp plan is just a policy document. It does not have the rule of law. It's just a policy document. So, you know, we'll, we'll certainly be able to work with the property owners to help them understand this process and, and why that's different from property rights. A comp plan does not affect anybody's property rights to develop. Again, comp plan is simply a policy document. And, you know, I think the work of the PC Working Group to date has provided some really good valuable insight. You know, the, just not to pick one over the other, but, you know, some of that very good deliberative discussion about needing to continue to reinforce the boundary separation between, say, Norwich and Tuana. You know, that's been a goal that's been in the comp plan these last couple of updates. And so, you know, certainly there's some really, really good consistency there. As you all, so I say all that to say, I'm just going to ask you all to keep one piece of information in the back of your minds as we proceed over these next couple of months because certainly this isn't the, the end all be all discussion on the future land use map. It's absolutely going to be an iterative process. It's absolutely going to be a process that's vitally dependent on public input. Both public input that's been received so far in the process and public input that's yet to come through some of our other engagement opportunities and all of the valuable outreach opportunities that the CPT is identifying. With that said, what we're going to have to, I think, you know, as, as staff and the consultant team, continue to have this iterative discussion with you all about making some of these individual decisions, which is really, really important. And every single- decisions, which is really, really important and every single piece is unique, right? And so they're all going to have pros and cons. I would like you to keep in the back of your mind, though, those control totals. We can't abandon those as part of the methodology of the process. And I know there's, there's, there's sort of been some statements to the fact, and again, I think all of that input should continue to inform you all's decision-making process and continue to, all of that public input to date, continue to have an absolute priority placed in the discussions. However, like I say, where the public input to date and the methodology that was developed for this comp plan update and the methodology that's been discussed with the board of supervisors and all of our joint work sessions, all the input to date has been revolving around keeping those control totals in mind and what the resulting fiscal impact models and what the resulting leave behind models are all built around. You know, in Virginia, we don't really have the luxury of having population caps or being able to have moratoriums on building permits. And so we've, we've sort of brought some of those factors to light in discussions over the years. And so, you know, I would just urge you all to keep that in the back of your mind. It would, I think, sort of changing, I think, sending some of those thoughts forward to the board about ultimately where we're headed. I think sort of sending some of those considerations, having some of those discussions for the board is really, really important. I think at this point in the comp plan update, to have a, what I would sort of loosely call sort of a big methodology shift to sort of now start land use planning more towards something closer to 100 versus 120 or whatever the control totals are, I think that represents a big methodological shift when we're sort of three quarters of the way through the process. And so, you know, again, glad rightly so, said at the end of the day, we're, you know, we're not shooting for that. It's not a goal, those control totals aren't sort of what we're aiming for, but sort of what we need to plan for needs to have some of that in consideration because at the end of the day, sort of how all of this ties together is going to be in those, those final runs of the models, the transportation model, the fiscal impact analysis model, all of that will then be translated into those leave behind models. And it's going to be real important that we sort of calibrate all those because the real value of those models is going to be, let's say for the countywide fiscal impact model, in order to sort of do the apples to apples on a future policy change or a future impact change or a future implementation change, you know, in order to get the value out of that model, you need to be able to plug that one change into the model to sort of see how that changes the fiscal trajectory or to see how it changes those line graphs, if you will, to sort of help better inform those decisions when they take place in the future. So, you know, again, I think, I think we're at a point where you all are making some really, really good informed decisions on these parcels individually. It's just that, you know, as the county staff and consultant team, I don't want you all to completely abandon the notion of planning for those control totals. I still think that needs to be a part of the discussion and there's still a lot to be figured on how that resolves itself before we hit the end of the process. But, you know, sort of shifting from a managed growth to sort of a no growth or very slow growth model, I think is part of a much larger conversation than probably we're going to sort of do that paradigm shift is probably a different discussion that won't necessarily, I think, be a part of this comp plan. We'll, we'll need to think through that for sure. And again, I think what you all are seeing is absolutely trying to do the hard work of balancing that public input, sort of balancing and reconciling the great public input that says preserve our rural areas, do more to preserve our rural areas and try to accommodate that growth more so inside the existing PSA where existing utilities can be leveraged in an effort to try to create some of those walkable mixed use place types that were showcased in some of the earlier public input events. So yes, again, sort of balancing all that is very, very difficult, but, you know, again, I just, I would caution the work of this update to not completely abandon those control totals. I don't think that's our end goal, but we, we just, something to be thinking about as part of this conversation for sure.
Thanks, Paul. And you provided a better clarification than I did in my earlier comments and I, and I still, you know, I still feel that while I agree with Frank and Jack that I'd rather not see the 120,000 in the year 2045, but I think it would be a mistake not to at least put, at least start planning for that possibility. And that's one of the reasons I'll support moving this one forward. But, but I do think that, that the citizen survey is very clear and I think that we have to start making the decisions to say, okay, what tools do we have to force growth into the PSA and increase density? There are, I'll be honest, there's, I'm not sure which hands are new and which ones were not put down in the last conversation. So let me just pick on the folks that I see the hands for. Start with Tim and go to Julie and Jenny. Tim?
Thanks, Rich. Paul said it a lot better than I could, but I think it's important to sort of understand too, you know, that we can't cap population. So, you know, I know it talks about the 120,000, but, you know, we don't have the ability to cap it. We have the ability to steer it. So I think that's really important. I think it's important too to understand that even though we have all these approved pieces and all this, you know, and we have a lot of by right that's out there to be built, doesn't mean it will all be built in the next few years, you know, and I look at some of our bigger pods, you know, like a Colonial Heritage or a Stonehouse. I mean, nobody expected Stonehouse to take this long to develop. And then I would, was just going to say too, that, you know, I would appreciate Ellen, you know, taking that parcels labeled 24 and, you know, breaking it into the four parcels so we have a little better understanding, you know, so maybe we can make a more informed decision in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Julie and then Jenny?
Yes, thank you. I find myself agreeing with everybody who's speaking, Frank, Jack, Tim. So that tells me this parcel needs to move forward. But I'm going to stick my neck out here and say that this and the next five all fall in the same category. Staff has identified these as potential places that might be appropriate if the county does grow, that we could steer high density residential. And so I suspect, I may be wrong, that we will be having similar discussions about each one of these with pros and cons that are very reasonable on both sides. So can I stick my neck out and move that we move forward all six of these?
I, and this won't cut off the discussion because there's other hands up, but I would have no objection and just from a protocol standpoint, I'll check with Ellen, would there be a problem with moving all of those in one motion to go forward for further analysis?
No, staff would be glad to do that.
Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor then, but I do want to let everybody speak who had their hand up and Jenny and Frank and Jack. So Jenny, you're next.
Thank you. I just wanted to get a little bit more clarity on a previous discussion of this particular parcel. If, if my notes are correct, somebody mentioned Powhatan Creek being affected in parcel 24. And if indeed my notes are correct, could somebody tell me which of these parcels, maybe all of them, would have the Powhatan Creek consideration and the, how serious it is?
That was me, Frank, that brought that up. And so it's the lower two parcels that are adjacent to War Hill Park and, you know, those two parcels are the main trunk of the upper end of Powhatan Creek. And my example of this in the development is what's occurred with the development of Eastern State, and that's the right wing of the Powhatan Creek with the main trunk of it going through Long Hill Swamp, down through Ford's Colony. So one of the objections I've had about this is all of the problems we've had in our watershed happen in the upper ends of it where the development are. And so if you go and look at the development that we've done in Colonial Heritage, the amount of money that we've had to do on the Yarmouth, and all those are headwaters. And that's where we have the problems with the development. And so when you look at the data with the increase in impervious surface from Eastern, not from Eastern State, from Newtown, and you're going to do the same thing with Eastern State, you're going to see a more erosion to the hydrology to that. The same thing will happen because that development of those four tracks is all woods, but it's the lower two tracks of that thing. So what happens is, is we continue to develop on all these headwaters and we start causing all these problems downstream. And so the downstream issues that I've been talking about, which have to do with increased precipitation, which everybody knows about, but what it's doing is causing flooding. So when you start these development, and most of the BMPs that we put together do less than 50% of it and their size is all wrong for what's going to happen with the precipitation. So we have flooding that now occurs on either side of Lafayette High School where it goes across Long Hill. You have flooding in Edinburgh, which is inside of Ford's Colony today, and you have flooding across News Road. As a matter of fact, when we had a hurricane, that News Road was blocked off with two places. So all we're doing is adding more of a problem that is around the corner. So that's my pitch about not wanting to develop those areas. Now, if there had to be a compromise, it would be the two northern ones, which are actually A1 and then R8 parcels. But the other pieces, access through the bottom two is hindered because of the RPAs. And really to even get into where they're talking about, you'd have to go through one of the developments to be able to get it because you couldn't get to the real land off of Long Hill. Okay. I've said that, I hope that's answered your question.
Thank you. It has. And just a question on Julie's motion. If for one reason or another that motion fails, does that mean we go through these one by one?
Yes.
That's my intention, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Jack, you had a comment?
I have a couple, yes. The first, Tim mentioned the proximity to schools and other things, police and fire. It's actually in reasonable proximity to five schools. There's War Hill High School, Lafayette, Hornsby Middle School, Blatton Elementary School, and Montague Elementary School. But none of them have the capacity to handle anywhere near the number of kids that would come out of a medium or high density development in this place. We know that from last year's CIP discussion, particularly the elementary schools, but even that, well, I shouldn't say particularly, the Lafayette High School and War Hill were very near capacity also. In fact, both of them had applications in for expansion. So that would create a problem, I think. The other thing is we're not, with regarding to a population cap, I understand we can't just legislate a cap to the population, but we don't have to redesignate low density parcels to higher or medium density parcels. That, not doing that does not violate state code, to my knowledge. We're not stopping growth here. This is still designated LDR. You can put up one house per acre or you can put four houses per acre if you give up some, if you, you know, accommodate a couple of the density bonus points. So that's a lot of people without redesignating it. Oh, the other one is mixed use. The, we're supposed to, when we increase density, create mixed use or complete communities or UDAs or whatever you want to call them, that I don't see how you can do that with this parcel. You're not going to put, you know, places of business and entertainment and restaurants and retail establishment and office buildings all walkable or bikeable to the houses that you're going to put in here. This isn't going to be a mixed use parcel, I don't think. I don't, maybe somebody cleverer than I could, could do it, but I don't think so. So I'm going to vote not to send this forward.
Okay. Tim?
I appreciate what Jack's got to say, but I don't think we can make our decisions based on, on school population. You know, I think that falls to the school board and, you know, the fact that they would have to redistrict or create more or, and I know ultimately creating more would come to us, but, you know, I, I don't think we should let that impact our decision is what the capacity of the schools are.
I agree from the standpoint of, remember, this is a comprehensive plan that's looking 25 years into the future. And I guess the point I'm advocating, and I agree with Tim, is that what we want to do is just put the tools in place. There are so many moving parts that could have an influence, you know, that my concern is that we, that we are shutting the door and not having the discussion and evaluating the land based on the citizen survey and the potential population shift that we might Any, any other comments before we vote?
Yeah, I have my hand up.
I didn't know if it was from before, Frank. Go ahead.
A couple things. I really want to talk about three issues. The first one is Paul's conversation that he had there. You know, I wouldn't, wouldn't have so much of a problem about having some of these potentially affordable housing projects go forward if they weren't labeled that way. But, but the way this thing is right now, those, these properties that we're talking about, RHD, are underneath that goal of providing affordable housing. And so if somebody could tell me for MAP ID 28, where we have a concept plan for that, it's in Paul's office right now for something called the Homes at Wessex 100 Parcels, that is going, within those 16 acres is going to put townhouses and apartments and single family homes and tell me how you would go to the public and say, we're putting MAP ID 28 in there for affordable housing. Paul, how would you do that? And so my objection to these is the, the idea that these are lumped underneath the goal of affordable housing, of which you get a self fulfilling prophecy because of the five things that folks want to see. Number three is affordable housing and you're going to label these as that. to see. Number three is affordable housing, and you're going to label these as that. And they're not. So I wouldn't have a problem if they went forward, if you didn't label them underneath that goal of meeting affordable housing. And my point in case is MAP ID 28. That's not going to be affordable housing in any stretch of the imagination. Number two is, I'm not against growth. I'm not trying to put a cap. I understand what the legislature says and what the directive is. But, you know, the, the first thing that we talk about is how to manage growth. And so back to the self fulfilling prophecy. The current land use map meets about 85% of that 120,000. And when you lump in what we're going to start talking about, you start approaching 87 and 90. So where does it say that I got to get to 100% of that, when in some cases, what's being proposed underneath the guise of affordable housing is false? Now, having said that, there are two that may make some sense. As a matter of fact, one piece of it is already zoned R5. So it's not like I'm against each and every one of these for this reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Any other comment?
Well, this is Julie again, since I made the motion. What I'd like to see us do is carry this discussion on all five of, six of these parcels and proposals together. And we may end up saying no to some of them and yes to some of them. But I think that the total discussion should be which, if any, of these parcels would be appropriate for us to direct high density housing. Because affordable housing is one component of high density. And if we keep that in mind, which I trust that we will, based on the public input, when proposals come forward for high density housing someplace in the county, we can say, that's not really where we had had plans for this. This is where we want to direct the high density housing. Because we've been saying for a long time, we need to identify parcels where high density housing would be appropriate. And staff have done that. So I would like to continue this conversation. Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. I see no more hands. So we have, we do have a motion to move the remaining six parcels for scenario B forward for further analysis and discussion at a future working group meeting. Ellen, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Krupp.
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman.
No.
Ms. Leffler.
Aye.
Ms. Knoll. Ms. Knoll. I'll come back to you.
I'm here. Mr. O'Connor. Aye, sorry.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Pollster?
No.
Dr. Rose?
Aye.
And Ms. Wartman?
I think no.
Those six looks as though they would move forward for exploration. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. And thank you all. It was a good discussion and, obviously, no simple answers. I guess that, Thomas, that concludes your portion of the land use materials. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you, everybody, for a great discussion. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Ellen, shall I turn this over to you for the next item?
Yes, yeah, thank you. Just a couple of very brief remarks before the chapter, chapter teams present to you tonight. Just to note that the, the, one of the focuses of what they'll be presenting to you is the, the first draft of the goals, strategies, and actions. We wanted to thank the members that have sent comments in so far, both on those and the technical reports. And we have received those. We'll be looking at those in detail. We'll be also glad to receive any after the meeting as well, if you hadn't had time to give us some detailed comments before the meeting. So I wanted to assure you all of that. After the meeting tonight, we will have one more time when we bring back the chapter materials to you. So you will see those GSAs again another time. A little bit later in the process, we'll take your comments from tonight. And we will also be taking the public comments from round three of the public input, both together, and infusing those into the revised version of the GSAs that would come to you again later. And I think that was mostly, other than today, with, with all the different pieces in part, if we have missed something that you have sent us as far as reflecting it in tonight's materials, from, you know, the first time that we went through the chapter materials or email, please do let us know. It would have been inadvertent if we, if we didn't include something. So just wanted to, to let you all know that as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jose and John.
Good evening to the working groups. My name is John Reisinger, and I'm a planner in, in community development. With me tonight is Jose Ribeiro, also a planner. And together we will be presenting the population section. Next slide. Our items for discussion this afternoon include revisions to the technical report and technical appendix, the results from the second round of community engagement, and the revisions to the goals, strategies, and actions. Next slide. Some of the notable revisions to the technical report and technical appendix include the addition of language clarifying staff's methodology for the linear population projection, updating the age cohort projections with the most recent data published by Welldon Cooper Center, and adding additional graphics. Staff has also made a number of grammatical and formatting revisions. Staff has received additional feedback from the working group leading up to this meeting, which will be included in future revisions. Next slide. Community guidance document has been updated with the results from the second round of community engagement. In the establishing questionnaire, 6.9% of respondents said the goal should remain the same, while 25% said it should be changed. Comments received from those in favor of changing the goal indicated that it should have a greater emphasis on citizens' needs and amenities. Responses received for the alternative features questionnaire showed considerable support for scenario B. Comments indicated that it improved accessibility to trails, parks, and schools. Next slide. For the goal strategies and actions, the goal has been revised to reflect input from the establishing our goals questionnaire. Revisions have also been made to the strategies and actions with input from Parks and Recreation and Social Services. Actions have been added as well to coordinate with the strategic plan. Next slide. What you see on the screen now is the revised goal language, which reads, provide the means for all citizens, especially youth and seniors, to achieve a high quality of life through safe, affordable, and convenient access to programs, services, and activities. So the change here is to add language identifying that we should achieve a high quality of life. And so now we will be bringing up a PDF of the GSAs for the further discussion of the strategies and actions.
Good evening, and thank you, everybody from the planning commission working group. So I would like to go over the revision that staff made to the existing goals, the strategies, and actions. And starting with a goal and generally mention that the consultant work on the revision of the goal, and it really reflects input from the goals questionnaire. Okay, so let's go ahead to strategy number one. So the first strategy, as revised, promote public transportation services and multimodal access, including future greenway connections in partnership with the Williamsburg Area Transit Authority. So revisions that were made to actions under the strategy, they include updating doc, document names, addressing multimodal transportation. The multimodal transportation is reflected on action PN 1.4. No new actions were proposed for the strategy. At this time, I would like to ask if any members of the planning commission working group has any questions about the strategy or actions?
I don't see any hands, Jose, so I think you could proceed.
Okay. PN2. The, the strategy has been revised to align more comprehensively with the actions. The revised act is promote facilities and services that provide care, education, or recreational opportunities geared towards specific interests and ages of youth, adults, and seniors. Revisions to the actions, actions include reorganizing some of the actions, updating program and agency names, and providing additional emphasis on childcare. No new action proposed, however, action PN 2.8 was completely reequal. Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's jump to PN3. The strategy was revised to focus, to focus on affordability. The revised act is maintain and improve the affordability of programs, services, and events to all citizens. So revisions to the actions have been made to be consistent with the Parks and Recreation Department's current programming, as well as to address community health care, senior housing, and assessing food insecurity for lower income households. A new action is PN 3.4, which is based on goal number five of the strategic plan. New action PN 3.8 was added to address food insecurity for lower income households. The planning commission working group have any questions about this strategy and actions?
I see Jenny Wartman has her hand up. Go ahead, Jenny.
Thank you. This, my comment pertains to a number of the goals and actions. And it is simply that I am struck by the fact that we keep talking about attracting millennials and people who want to live in these complete communities, young families, as people we want to have in these good new, high paying jobs that we want to develop. And yet, those people are not mentioned at all in the population chapter. It's, the emphasis is completely on young people and old people and people with lower incomes, which I'm, I'm not complaining about that. But it strikes me that there is a disconnect between the needs that the people that we want to attract to these new jobs might have, and what's in the population chapter. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Jose, any, or staff in general, any comments about that?
Sure, I can, I can give it a try. Thank you for your comment. So in the past, there was two sections, population and population needs. And this is the time, this is, today we are, you know, combining those two, two sections. Demographics talks a lot about general demographics of the population. And then the population needs, it was really a discussion about the most vulnerable population, which includes seniors and, 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 you know, and children. So, you know, that's, that's how the, the final product came to be with an explanation of demographics in general, I'm sorry, not an explanation, but showing the demographic elements of the county, but then with a, with emphasis on, on the youth and seniors.
Thank you, Jose. Does that answer your question, Jenny?
Not entirely. I mean, I understand how it came to be. And I'm, I'm, I'm not complaining about that. I'm just wondering whether, if this is a forward looking plan, and we're trying to build these new communities, whether we shouldn't also have goals that would help to attract these people to the kinds of wanting to form. Now, I may be alone in this, so...
No, I, I think your, your point is well taken. But I, I think, you know, from my, from my standpoint, the, there are many other sections of the comprehensive plan that will address those other needs, if not saying this is for millennials or whatever. But whether it's the amenities associated with the Parks and Recreation Section, or the education section, that we want good schools that, you know, you could extrapolate to say so would therefore be attractive for the people with, with maybe searching for higher paying jobs to relocate here. In other words, I think my, my sense is that the population needs is, as Jose said, geared more to the at risk folks, but amenities for millennials and others are sprinkled through the goals and strategies and actions of, of some of the other sections. And that might be an oversimplification on my part, but that's sort of how I was looking at it.
Okay.
But that's, doesn't mean it's right. That's just how I was looking at it. Julia had her hand up, so I'll...
Yes, I'd like to build on this also. I think somewhere, and it might be in the technical report, there's mention about needing to serve the entire population, but just focusing for now on the, on the youth and the, and the seniors. But I think it might be worthwhile to say that somewhere in here as well, whether it's a separate goal, or just to mention that we're focusing on youth and seniors here, but not ignoring everybody else. Because clearly, what's, ideally, somebody would move here for a well paying job and then stay, at which point they would become a senior and may need some of these programs and stuff. So, you know, any, anything, and of course, their youth, if they have children, would be candidates for some of these programs. So it's, it's clearly beneficial for, for young families to have all of these services for the elders as well as the youth. But I, I think it might be worthwhile to follow up on what Jenny said, to mention that somewhere. So if staff could maybe just take a look at, would there be something that they could build in for that?
Good point. Frank?
Yeah, I, I agree with Jenny. And, and it really has been bothering me for a while, especially with Jack's comments back and forth with Tim recently, about what kind of a community are we? And I, I think in some respects, the demographics piece captures it, but it doesn't come close to the idea that we're a bedroom community. And that 17,000 folks leave every morning to go work someplace else because there are higher paying jobs, but they live here because they like the amenities. And so I think the question that Jack's been asking us is, there is nowhere in any of the comprehensive plan, or any recognition of the fact that we are a bedroom community. And, and the idea that we may have this fantasy of technology and all the rest of that in, in these EO areas, that will bring in all these high paying jobs, is fine, but you ought to at least admit to the fact about what your current demographics are, and who they are and what they're looking. They come to this place because of our schools, the quality of life, and to retire. And that's And that's much different from some of the things that we're talking about.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts on that?
Just if I might, it's Jack since um Frank used one of my points. It's not just that we are a bedroom community, a suburb. Is that a goal? Um, I I know it has not been a goal in the past. It just happened through poor planning. But it do do we want to state that we want this process to continue? Or do we want to state that we don't want this process to continue?
I don't I don't know. I'm looking, I look at it too as, I mean, we we do have some major employers here that um for a a segment of the population doesn't make it a bedroom community, but there are also people who commute to Hampton and Richmond and and places like that. So I I don't know that you could just say blanket statement, we're we're a bedroom community. I think we're a mix, but um that's just that's just my opinion.
Okay, I'll accepting that. Uh, I'll just repeat my question. Do we want to become a bedroom community? Do we want to become a sub-suburb? Uh, or do we not? Whether we are now or not, we can we can dispute, but do where where do we want to be in the future? This is a plan, right?
Tim? You may be muted, Tim.
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Um, now, I I mean, I understand, I don't think what Jack's saying. I don't think, you know, that's an aspiration. Um, you know, I do think, we we've talked about this a little bit before. Um, you know, I I think we have to um create in this um uh comp plan, and I'm not sure where the right place is, but I do think we have to create a narrative that says, you know, uh, this is what our aspiration is. And it's gonna take, you know, the input and it's gonna take the the understanding that, you know, it might be a part of the strategic plan of the Board of Supervisors. And, you know, it might take economic development and schools and all those things that make this um as an attractive bedroom community, but it's not the driving force. Um, you know, I was just interested thing to me to to read some of the stuff that I shared over the weekend about needing the high tech and, you know, having, you know, I I've I've been arguing and and more vocal now and, you know, as I get my kids out of schools. But um, you know, all of our kids, whether they're um uh New Horizons, so they're in the trades, or if they're in the governor's school, you know, they gotta leave the area to go to school. And to me, that is, if I'm looking for good schools, that's not attractive. Um, you know, so I those, I mean, it it's it's one of the things where it takes the village. So I I'm sorry, I don't mean to ramble, but I I think I think we have to to Jack's point, figure out what the aspiration is and then create the rest of the narrative to support that.
And I think also too, you know, I I don't think it's an either-or, as I said earlier. I mean, a number of our goals uh in the comp plan are to develop uh different revenue streams so that we're not as reliant on tourism and and hospitality, for example. And and, you know, where we have economic opportunity zones carved out in a couple areas of the of the county on on our land use um aspirations. And so, you know, certainly I I I we can address it, but I I don't think there's a a goal that says we want to be a a bedroom community or one that we don't want to be a bedroom community. I just think um we've got to take into account that that our demographics are mixed. Um, you know, we've got a a lot of retirees here, but we also are trying to be a little more proactive in attracting new industries um to the county as well. Frank, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I wa- I wanted to make a suggestion, and I think of the population section and the rec piece are a perfect example uh of trying to do cross-leveling across goals. And if I understood it correctly, that at some point, the consultant team is going to try to take a coordination process of those goal strategies and actions that look across these areas. And it would seem to me that the preamble to that is going to talk about that aspiration that considers those issues that cross amongst and support each other. It it I think that's that's clear when you look at the population and and the rec. And I'm sure that when the staff gets a chance, we're gonna see more of that. So I I I would just like to see the the staff take this idea of what that amalgamation would look like of of goals, strategies, and actions that are mutually supportive. And what does it tell us about where we want to go from an aspirational point of view? And if it's a better community, fine. If it's something else, it's a mix or whatever, that's fine. But at least there would be a basis for support for it.
Good, that and good synopsis of the discussion, Frank. Thank you. And Ellen and Jose, does that give you something to work with moving forward?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for all for all the input.
Okay, and then I'll I'll send it back to Jose, because I I know you're still working your way through your section.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, strategy PN four. Um, the strategy was revised to focus on improving coordination between different programs and our uh different, I'm sorry. Let me step back. The strategy was revised to focus on improving coordination between different programs and awareness of services. So the revised strategy is improve coordination between public and private programs and services and increase awareness of the services among all citizens, especially youth and seniors. Um, so new and uh new actions have been uh have been included or added to address the needs of seniors and the needs of the homeless, lower income, and special needs population. Uh, a new action, uh, a a new action PN four point two. Um, that is based on a goal five of the strategic plan. New actual new action uh PN four point five. It is a continuation to participate and support organizations that provide relief for homeless. Uh, new action PN four point six, um, also based on goal number five of the strategic plan. And um also another new action, uh, PN four point seven, uh, which supports the concept of aging in place uh by supporting this generational housing. Um, so those are revisions to the um strategies and actions um for PN four. Um, does the members of the planning commission working group have any questions?
Um, Ms. Wirtman?
Thank you. Um, just a very brief comment on four point seven. Um, we can support aging in place um without talking about multi-generational housing. So, for example, my husband and I might want to age in place and we're not multi-generational. So I all I'm saying is I wouldn't make a dependent on um multi-promoting multi-generational housing.
So you're advocating that we just um stick to the action item of continue to support the concept of aging in place, period?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone um have any objections to that change? Okay, thanks, Ginny. Uh, any other, any other comment at this point? All right, Jose?
Uh, the last strategy is um the most citizen citizen access to and knowledge about technical log- tech- technological resources. Um, action PN five point two, it was revised to focus focus on awareness of technological resources in the county. Um, does member of planning commission working group have any questions regarding any of these changes or revision revisions?
Um, Frank?
Yeah, not not a comment on any of the GSA's. I I just wanted to make a comment. And Jose, I appreciate the answer that you gave me uh on the uh under nineteen population and how you're gonna fix that. But I think the issue that I was trying to get at is that if we're going to stick with the control totals that Paul talked about, one of the things that those control totals talk about, given the Walden Cooper methodology of the distribution of population, talks about where that population of under nineteen is going to be located. And so, not surprising if I just took the as-is T A Z eighteen twenty nine nine for Stonehouse, I'd see ten thousand folks in population, which means X number of schools. And so I was half kidding about that the county ought to take the proffer for a middle school in the Stonehouse area, given that change. So when I look at those figures of under nineteen and try to figure out where the next school is going to go, and I go back and look at the document that was provided from the consultant team on where they thought schools would be, either in north, central, or south, I would like to see something that is a little bit more definitive that gets at this conversation we were just having recently about the Armistead piece of whether the schools would be there or not. Well, the fact is, if you put a hundred and twenty thousand folks in some place, you're going to shift the locus of where you ought to build that, which is why the comment. So the other piece that I think that there's a disconnect to is if I take the final distribution based on what the consultant says for a hundred and twenty thousand, which tells us the number of children under nineteen plus what your population figures are going to be corrected to. And I looked at the ten-year Future Think study that was done in November with the schools. There's a huge disconnect in terms of what that number is, which is going to affect the cumulative impact of how much of whatever you need, specifically schools. So I'd like to be able to see some sort of harmony. And maybe we've got apples and oranges, because I think that there's some differences in the methodologies. But somebody's going to be telling us in that cumulative impact for the financial piece, where we ought to have a school based on that at a hundred and twenty thousand distribution for the ages of nineteen and below. So is that an absurd request to say, tell us where the kids are going to be?
Now, is this, are you advocating this for the population needs section, Frank, or?
The population needs has that nineteen in it, but it uses a figure that says we're going to have that, but so what? So I don't care if it's in the population, but if we're going to have a cumulative impact that says where we're going to have something, we ought to at least know where it's going to be based on that hundred and twenty thousand population. I mean, I mean, what the school guys say is, God, you don't want to bus kids all over the place. Well, maybe you need to go ahead and pick up that Stonehouse piece if that's where the population center is going to be for the next middle school. But that's what this model is supposed to tell us, or at least give us some indications of it. So let's look at the Future Think. Let's look at what the consultant's gonna come up with as redistribution of his totals. Let's look at the population thing so that they at least are in agreement with each other.
Ellen?
As much as they can be.
I I I think Ellen was gonna address that. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, I guess, uh, first of all, I I would just maybe suggest it may not be the population chapter, um, as Mr. Crop just mentioned, but, you know, potentially something for public facilities or land use. And I know you mentioned that you didn't mind where it was, but um just to just to note that. Um, as far as the the good point about um there being some differences between documents out there, uh, I think staff can take an initial look at that, whether we will be able to resolve all the the differences and and ferret out differences in methodology or or things like that. Um, I I don't know if we'll we'll get to that point, um, but we can we can take an initial look at it. Um, and I I think we will have another run of the model before this process is over um that that goes back to titular vice, goes back to the consultant team to have them do projections for facility needs um uh after some of the the land use decisions get a little further along, so.
Would be great, Ellen, because I agree. And that's one of the reasons why I've supported the model piece, because whether you want a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty, what you ought to know is what's the cumulative impact on traffic and the financial aspect to the county with these future distributions? You know, we won't get the environmental piece, but at least for these two, given these decisions that will be made at some point, it ought to be clear in terms of what that impact is. So, you know, I still expect to be able to see some notion that we say, okay, it's okay to have Eastern State there, and here's what the impact is, both on a cumulative and transportation. So the population piece that I'm talking about, once again, I don't care where it shows up, but that cumulative aspect of what we're talking about gets down to the level of whether it's a fire station, okay, right? Or a police station or a school. It's the same thing.
Paul, I I see you had your hand up also.
Yeah, I and again, I'm just stuck again, sort of bookmarking and and supplementing the the great information shared with Ellen to say, you know, again, just to sort of help set expectations. Um, to your point, I think what the fiscal models are gonna show and what all of the titular vice models and what what all of the um what all of the scenario planning is gonna show is going, based on the, based on the growth, based on uh the the various geographic divisions of the county that are set up in the base of that fiscal impact analysis, I I think we will absolutely see the quantities needed of those public, future public facilities based on the population growth that are designed to maintain current levels of service. Where I, as part of this comp plan update, we're not gonna get to a point where those locations for those future facilities are shown geographically just because somebody brought it up earlier, you you know, getting from sort of here to there, there are so many sort of operational decisions that get made. Somebody, you know, again, brought the 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 analogy of the schools discussion. And a- as you all can appreciate, you know, that's an ongoing discussion every year and sort of the balance between, do we build new facilities? Do we build additions onto our existing facilities? Is the is the is the distribution accomplished through a a a non-physical sort of rezoning to sort of rebalance the population? You know, fire stations are much more um um sensitive to geographic distribution to try to maintain that response time, especially with inside the PSA. And so, you know, but that's what the purpose of those, those sort of location decisions, that's what the purpose of all those subsequent implementation items are, whether it be through CIP budgeting or through, you know, what future development comes along. Maybe there's a a future public use site out there. Um, and so, you know, a lot of those things tend tend to ebb and flow between this twenty-five-year planning document and sort of when the implementation of that happens. And that's fine. I think the process allows for all of that. But I do think one of the great advancements But I do think one of the great advancements that we're getting as part of this comprehensive plan update is we will absolutely have a better understanding about the quantities of those future facilities we're going to need and what the resulting fiscal impact of those over the long run, over the timeline horizon of this comp plan will be. So, you know, true, true progress and progression on that front for sure.
Paul, I absolutely agree. That's why I was thrilled to death when they added a strategy and action that would try to get to the equity issue of bright beginnings with kindergarten where one through four before pre-kindergarten as an aspiration. And if that aspiration isn't stated, it doesn't show up in anybody's planning for that age group, which they don't include currently in your population or the future think. So let's talk about that aspiration and making sure that we have facilities for that age group. And that's my point.
Any, any further comments from staff? All right. So going back to Ellen's comment where the, they, the staff's going to look at incorporating some of these ideas that have just been articulated into possibly other segments of the plan, but certainly addressing them. All right. Thank you, Frank. And Jose, did you have anything further on um, population needs?
Uh, no, no. Thank you so much for all, all the comments and all the input. Much appreciated.
Great. Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to Ellen to introduce the um, Parks and Rec section for tonight.
Yes, thank you. Um, we are pleased to have with us Julie Northcott Wilson from our Parks and Rec Department as well as Terry Costello. Thank you.
Good evening all. Um, Julie and I will be presenting our Parks and Recreation section. Next slide. The items for review today are revisions to the technical report, an update to the community guidance document, and a review of the goals, strategies, and actions. Next slide. The revisions on the technical report are based on comments and questions from the PCWG. Text has been added to describe the relationship between the comprehensive plan GSAs and the Parks and Rec master plan. Language has also slightly been revised in the facility inventory section describing park maintenance to more accurately capture the responsibilities of different county departments. Next slide. The community guidance document has been updated to reflect the results of the establishing our goals questionnaire. Of the responses received, eighty-three percent said the goal should remain the same and just under thirteen percent stated that the goal should change. Comments mentioned from those who stated the goal should change included that the goal should provide more affordable, accessible, equitable, and geographically dispersed facilities to accommodate all residents. Concrete objectives should be developed to better achieve the goal. Goals should include more bike and walking paths, increase connectivity options, and attract more tourism. The results of the alternative future survey indicated that scenario B would improve accessibility to trails, parks, and schools. Next slide. The Parks and Recreation goal has been revised to reflect the citizen input received. Revisions have also been made to the goals, strategies, and actions based on input from the Department of Parks and Recreation and also to coordinate with the county strategic plan and the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Next slide. The revised goal is to provide a range of recreation facilities and activities designed by the community that are affordable, accessible, and adequate in number, size, type, and geographic distribution to accommodate the needs of all county residents and that promote personal growth, social development, and healthy lifestyles. Next slide. And with that, we look forward to any of your questions or comments on the revisions.
Turn that over to the working group. Any, any comments or questions? Um, yes, Frank.
Good job.
Pardon?
Good job.
Oh, oh, okay. I thought, I'm sorry. I, I was not used to such a, a brief comment, Frank. Anybody else? Okay, thanks very much. Uh, very, very good presentation. Thank you both.
Okay, now to the goal, goal, strategies, and actions. So as mentioned before, we did revise the goal um, based on citizen input. Um, the first strategy discusses the need to match the population needs with the programs and facilities. The actual strategy did not change. Um, PR one point two was revised to include the needs analysis performed by the department, um, Parks and Recreation Department. And PR one point five was deleted as it was overly specific and it's covered in one point three and one point four. And two items that were under PR eight were renumbered to this section. Any comments?
Anyone?
I, I just have, I have one, if I may. In the goal, if you'll go back, you use geographic distribution. This was something I want to change too, but I used the word dispers, dispersal, dispersment. And the, if, there are two strategies and actions that I thought I made note of, and now I can't find them. It used dispersment instead of distribution. And um, this is a nitpick, I readily concede, but um, I think all, all those, pick one word and use them in all three contexts. Whether it's, I prefer dispersment, but um, di- distribution also works. If you'll go on, I'll try to find the other two and, no.
Okay.
No, one of them, here we go. One of the PR seven point seven, you use dispersion. And there's another one in there somewhere.
Okay.
And, and that, that's a good point, to be consistent throughout. So um, Jack, you're advocating your, your preference is dispersion.
I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to bang the table about it, but whatever it is, all, all of them should be the same.
Okay, all right. Good. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, go ahead, Terry.
Okay, strategy number two remains the same. It addresses the need for a network of trails and parks that allow for non-vehicular access that preserve the county's resources. Action two point one was revised and two point two was deleted. And we felt those items were more appropriate in the transportation section. And then there were some clarifications made to two point two point one, two point two point two, and two point five. Any comments?
Nope, looks like, looks like we're good with that.
Uh, let's see. PR three, we had a slight division or revision. Um, PR three point one was deleted as that program no longer exist, exists. Three point two was revised and three point three was added to support bicycle facilities. Any comments on this one?
Um, yes, Frank.
I, I just wanted to mention that, that I really do applaud the staff for this notion of coordinating their recreation master plan with the Greenway, the P D R, green space, and the community character, which are, are three separate programs. And I think that, that when the staff gets to the implementation as a operational initiative to be able to execute that, we'll get a better product of how that can help protect and preserve not only the rural, but the PSA. And I know that that's part of what Tammy wants to do. And I think trying to coordinate those plans together will help folks understand what we're trying to preserve no matter where it is.
I, I think that's a great point. Yeah. Thanks for highlighting that. Thank you. Jenny?
Uh, yep. I just wanted to mention that I'm not making individual comments as we go along, but I did uh, submit some suggestions for consideration. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I did see those. I didn't have, have any issue with, with your suggestions at all personally. Yep. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Terry.
Okay, PR four deals with the providing water access. Four point two was revised with some name changing and adding the Brickyard Landing. And then four point four was added as part of economic strategy. Any comments?
Comments? And Jenny, I assume your hand was up from last go around, right?
Indeed, I will lower it now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Frank?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, once again, compliment the staff for this last one on, on the ecotourism. I mean, I've been banging across that. And of course, what that will do, it will cross-level across the eco tour, the economic development piece, plus it'll get at Tammy's thing is what are we trying to preserve and how do we do that? And so there's a recognition about the uh, value that this county has for the lower Chico Hominy and the rural areas and what they can contribute to that economic ecotourism. So I was, you know, just thrilled to see that. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Frank. Anyone else? Okay, back to you, Terry and Julie.
Okay, PR five. This speaks to the need to protect open space and natural resources when new develops, developments are proposed. We revised the strategy and PR five point one was also rewarded to expand on this. And P, PR five point three had a minor edit. Any comments?
Any comments? Nope, looks like those are good.
PR six deals with the planning of the facilities and programs. Um, the strategy remained the same and we added six point seven um, so that, to maintain the certification.
Any, any feedback or comments on those? Okay.
The next strategy, um, the, the strategy was edited slightly. And seven point three was revised and seven point six and seven point seven were added to encourage the more equitable dispersion of facilities. Any comments?
Good catch. Anybody? Okay.
The next, um, PR eight, we actually condensed that and that was added to the first strategy. So that one no longer exists.
Okay.
PR nine, we um, we revised eight point one to include the social media aspect in the county's website. Just to update.
Okay.
I like the addition of economic development to that. Good point.
Yeah, good point. Anyone else? Nope, okay.
Okay. Which one am I on? PR ten, we am I the right one? Uh, we revised the strategy and we, um, nine point two, we added clarification with regards to signage.
Okay. Anyone? All right, please go ahead.
And the last one remains the same.
All right. Um, let's see, I see, oh, Jenny?
Is my hand up? No. Isn't?
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, Julia?
Thanks. Um, technically, I just couldn't get my hand up fast enough on the last one, but technically, it's interpretive, not interpretative.
Oh.
Nine point two.
Okay.
Interpretive signage.
Thank you. Tim?
Um, just a, an overall comment um, that ties back to the, the bigger theme of uh, you know, I don't care what, what nomenclature we, we want, whether it's housing opportunity policy or, or um, affordable housing or workforce housing, but and, and I don't know if Parks and Rec is the right place or if it would really be under, you know, an affordable housing goal, but um, you know, I just wonder, because we require so much recreation to be provided by HOAs. Now, I, I still argue that the more we require of an HOA, the less to provide, whether it's recreation or otherwise, um, you know, the, the less affordable, you know, the, the, the home becomes because there are so many monthly fees attached. And I just wonder if there's a place to consider opportunities or incentives. Um, one of the, one of the goals talked about, um, public playgrounds and, and that's what triggered it. You know, to actually for our Parks and Rec to partner with some of these communities that will meet certain thresholds. Um, you know, to either help support and maintain in exchange for those actually becoming public facilities versus just simply maintained for the sole use of the HOA. So ultimately, it could make a, a community more affordable and put a park near to some other communities that, that may or may not have one. So um, just a, just a random thought that I came across here.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim. Um, Frank?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Frank. Let me, it looks like Julie has her hand up um, for, and she may be addressing Tim's comment. So let me, let me let Julie Northcott Wilson go and, and then you, Frank, if that's all right.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, yes, I believe that um, that you were referring to PR seven point six. Um, working collaboratively with lower-income neighborhoods to facilitate improvements to neighborhood parks and recreation facilities. And I just wanted to confirm that um, that your comments are precisely why we added that action. Because we are aware that some neighborhoods um, have either no facilities or facilities that are not the same quality as other neighborhoods. And so we wanted to um, mention a way that can perhaps be used in the future to assist those areas. In addition, on the programming side, um, our Recreation Services Division makes a, a strong effort through their neighborhood outreach core area, which is their, their newest core program area, to operate programs either in lower-income neighborhoods or to provide transportation that enables children from those neighborhoods to be transported to places like the James City County Recreation Center's indoor pool, since their neighborhood probably does not have an indoor pool. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Um, Frank, you have the floor next.
Yeah, I want to go back to a question that Jenny asked me about the Powhatan Creek with the with the area for the AFD Armstead then, is when you look at the Capital Trail and you look at that section that's by the Jamestown High School that has a trail that goes across the Powhatan in several places, I found out by looking at the flooding plus the sea level rise, that there's a portion of that trail that ends up being covered within the 2030, 2040 timeframe of what we're talking about for this comp plan. And I asked John Kinefacs is who is responsible for that? Is it the county or is it the VDOT? And the answer was VDOT. And so I made this comment about cross leveling between chapters, whether it's economic development or it's the wrecks and parks, et cetera, that we look at those implications. And it's clear to me that there are impacts on county infrastructure that have, on Parks and Rec, that I want to make sure that we look at as we look at the implications of flooding and sea level rise. And so the other two examples besides this trail piece that gets disconnected is the property that we own for the Jamestown Arena and for areas on the Chickahominy Riverfront. And so as we're looking at this period of time of 2040, there is absolutely no doubt that we need a new bridge across Jamestown, which is also where we have a park and rec facility on the upper sense of the Powhatan. But, so when we do this cross leveling between these different sections, we actually look at the impacts that are on the different programs. Who is responsible for fixing the problem? Like the VDOT has the Capital Trail piece when it's flooded or sea level rise covers. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Um, did staff any, have any, um, follow up to that comment or, or just noted? All right. Um, let's see. Jenny had her hand up.
Thank you. Um, just a brief comment. Um, we have talked about these complete communities again, and the idea that there would be, I believe they're being called pocket parks. So more parks within easy walking distance rather than the large parks that you have to drive to is, is presently the case. I don't see that explicitly laid out in, um, the goals, strategies and actions. PR six or PR seven looks like either of those might be the right place for that, but, I wonder if staff could think about how to work in wording that would get to that, uh, idea of having more smaller, easier to get to parks that, that are associated with neighborhoods. Um, some of, some of the detailed ones come close to saying that, but it doesn't quite get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, you had your hand up?
I do. I'm, I'm kind of piling on here or preaching to the choir, I know, but one of the first responsibilities I had upon becoming a, a planning commissioner in early 2017 was reviewing the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which is extremely well done and informative. And, um, but the, the map in it and the, the map that's included in some of our materials here is quite striking. Um, there is only one Parks and Rec facility southeast of Jamestown Road. That's the Frank, um, facility. Um, and there's only, and there are no, um, river access points, uh, southeast of, well, Colonial, let's call it College Creek, southeast of College Creek, uh, public access points. And, um, I know there's a commitment that, I was the one who asked for the word dispersion to be put into the goal, just for that reason. I, I think, I, I know there's a commitment to do this, uh, to broaden our Parks and Rec, um, facilities. Uh, I, if you look at the gross numbers, we have more than enough for our population, but they're concentrated and, um, and, and the people in southeast, um, part of the county have been left out. So I just hope we, as a county, focus on that going forward. That's all.
Thanks, Jack. Tim?
Uh, I'm just a small nit that jumped out at me looking at, uh, PR seven point four. Um, perhaps we can clear, clarify biannually to say whether it's every two years or twice a year. So I just went through that in a, another analysis, which made a big difference for, for our community. So, um, might just be something to, to look at.
Good. Thank you. Uh, and Terry and Julia, you'll take the comments, uh, back that have been made so far?
Yeah. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments? All right. Thank you all very much and thanks to the presenters. Um, the, the next item on, the final item on our agenda is other items for discussion. And I think Tammy would like to present some, uh, feedback on the Community Participation Team.
Thank you. Um, with the CPT and the Planning Commission Working Group, we're very busy in 2020 and we're about to embark upon another very busy next few weeks. So I want to make sure to keep you abreast of, uh, all the latest developments. Uh, the, as you know, the Planning Commission Working Group will be conducting the next level of review on the chapters, uh, much as you did tonight, uh, before finalizing the draft in spring. Uh, meanwhile, the CPT will be launching round three of the public engagement effort to provide additional public input, uh, to guide the Planning Commission Working Group's consideration of those chapters and changes to them. So just for a few minutes tonight, uh, I'm going to highlight the round three effort in a little more detail because it's beginning, uh, this Monday, January 11th. And not only do we want you to participate, uh, but we also want to ask for your help in encouraging community members to participate. Uh, in essence, the approach is to have a series of three questionnaires. The first one is a policies and actions questionnaire, 14 questions designed to gauge, uh, community support for changes to policy direction and implementation actions or the GSAs, as you are familiar with them. Uh, these questions are focused on the planning priorities identified by the community, nature, economic development, affordable slash workforce housing and quality of life. And based upon the key questions, this body, the Planning Commission Working Group, uh, identified as being critical to ask the public. So this questionnaire will be posted on the web and distributed to key physical locations, uh, for paper survey versions on Monday, January 11th. Uh, there are two more, uh, both of which will be launched on January 25th. The, uh, next one is a character design guidelines questionnaire. This is on the MetroQuest platform that you're familiar with from the first round and the second round. Uh, this would test community preferences on the preferred type and scale of development and different development contexts. And then finally, a future land use map questionnaire. That is an interactive map and essentially comment card, uh, that will allow citizens to explore the land use applications that you voted to move forward tonight and at your previous meetings and then comment on them. Uh, to complement these questionnaires, the CPT is sponsoring a series of community chats, which will introduce the questionnaires and allow citizens to ask questions about them and the topics before taking the questionnaires. These will occur on January 14th and January 21st for the policies and actions questionnaire and January 28th and February 4th for the character design guidelines and future land use map questionnaires. The focus of these events is, uh, to be done in a virtual format or through the paper surveys distributed throughout the county. So there's no need for any of you to physically attend a meeting. Uh, our big push, uh, is to ask you to heavily promote the questionnaires so that we can get, uh, maximum involvement at this critical phase. Um, to help us accomplish that, we're going to be, uh, sending you an email tomorrow with a digital flyer and some blurbs that you might be able to use among the community groups, uh, if you are a member. So that's my spiel this evening and, uh, be happy to answer any questions, um, but I sincerely, um, hope that you all will be able to participate and, uh, help us spread the word.
Thanks, Tammy. And I see Frank ha- has his hand up, so I'll, uh, turn it over to him for a question or comment.
On item number six on the land use chapter material, for the items that are marked RHD, in the MetroQuest survey that you will take, will you characterize them underneath the goal of affordable housing as opposed to higher density?
Um, I will, uh, take a stab at answering this and then, uh, ask Ellen or Thomas to, uh, weigh in if I've missed anything, but, uh, I believe the, um, future land use map questionnaire, uh, and the interactive map and comment cards that, uh, go along with it, uh, are set up currently to talk about its current land use designation and its future land use designation. So it is in those terms of, uh, low density residential, high density residential. Well, we don't have a current designation, uh, such as that, um, moderate density residential or mixed use, et cetera. Um, I'm not thinking right now of any supplemental information that would, um, highlight its ability to promote affordable workforce housing. Is that right, Ellen?
Right. Yeah. I, I think the, um, the MetroQuest this time is, is pretty, pretty different than what was in round two. It's, it's not the scenario maps are depicting that. It's more, um, you know, here's some different types of development. Do you like, um, I'm trying to think of an example of, you know, this, this style of attached housing versus that style of attached housing, but it's not, the MetroQuest piece is not linked to specific land use applications. That will be a whole different survey. Um, and it, it, it's not tied to public input themes.
Or goals, Ellen? Or tied to goals?
Uh, as Tammy mentioned, for the land use, uh, questionnaire, it will just be what the current land use is and what the proposed, uh, land use would be. And then it, it has an opportunity for people to, uh, provide their comments or, or input.
With any of the survey questions, is there a connection to goal?
In the, uh, policies and actions questionnaire, we make linkages to, uh, prior, uh, public input and, uh, refinements, I guess, that have occurred to the, uh, discussions since then. And, uh, as we develop the MetroQuest and the future land use map questionnaire, uh, we can look for opportunities there, uh, to do the same. Uh, the policies and actions questionnaire is at a state of being finalized. Uh, the character design guidelines questionnaire through MetroQuest and the future land use map questionnaire, uh, is being refined. So I, I understand where you're coming from and I think we can look for opportunities to make those same linkages.
I think Julia made a good point that it's about RHD and not affordable housing in that respect. And I want to make sure that we don't have any self fulfilling prophecies, uh, based on what she has.
I see Paul has his hand up to add to the discussion. Go ahead, Paul. You're muted, by the way.
Sorry, just talking away over here all the time. It's not uncommon, by the way.
You're your best audience, I'm sure.
You got, you got that right. Just ask me. I'll tell you. Um, now, really just wanted to, to add to that conversation as well is that this upcoming round of community engagement, it is going to focus on some of the community character items and trying to do a deeper dive at some of those land use questions, different housing types, uh, different layouts. Um, you, you know, I think we made, we as staff anyway, I, I, I think, um, I'm pretty comfortable and confident when I, when I say with the buy-in of the PC Working Group, is that we were not, as part of this comprehensive plan, we were going to bring forward the recommendations of the Workforce Housing Task Force. We were not going to reinvent that wheel or sort of start that process over. You know, the work of the Workforce Housing Task Force was just so, so invaluable and productive and from my perspective, just, uh, helped to advance the conversation just by light years over what, what we as a community wanted to see for housing that was affordable to those working here in James City County. And so, you know, not so much a reference to your earlier statement, but, you, you know, again, the idea that, that the Workforce Housing Task Force wrestled with those very questions and I think came up with some really great recommendations that we should not have communities, new developments, entire new housing projects that are singularly dedicated to a single low price point, that really the success of the county, the success of the neighborhoods, the viability and the sustainability of our neighborhoods, the key to that success was aiming at those price points that are affordable at a hundred percent area median income and below to help facilitate those folks who are working in James City County and can also back support our economic development efforts, but with the very conscious decision in that vision statement that we should not have all one price point neighborhoods. We should have mixed income, mixed price point, uh, communities to, to help further implement that vision. And, and so we, you know, again, our commitment is to sort of bring all of those recommendations forward, better weave those recommendations into the various chapters of the comprehensive plan. So you'll see some of that in population, you'll see a lot more of it in housing, you'll, you'll see that, uh, attempt brought forward. And, and with that said, um, you know, there's still a long way to go on implementation. The Workforce Housing Task Force recommended a multifaceted set of recommendations, sort of a toolbox, if you will. Some of them did not require a bunch of extra resources and, and others required a lot of resources. Some, some are achievable in the short term, some are more achievable in the long term and, and sort of, you know, the, the implementation piece of the comp plan is the other, the other important half of this discussion is one, getting the policy documents like the comp plan and the task force recommendation setup. But then again, you'll, you, you, you're starting to understand the importance of the implementation piece on the backside. When we go back in and do updates to the zoning ordinance, do updates to the subdivision ordinance that affect both the by right and the legislative cases, because certainly the world's changed a little bit. We kind of can't have proffer policies anymore. And, and so the implementation of some of those tools and the implementation of, you know, let's say that next new development that's in for a concept plan only, you, you know, until we can get to a point where we have those extra implementation tools implemented out of the toolbox, until we have the ability to, um, um, trying to remember off the top of my head what some of those recommendations are, till we get a chance to, to get those adopted into code, you know, again, the comp plan will, will continue to be a, a, a vision document and a policy document. But again, I say all that to say, no, we're not reinventing the question because I think the dedicated work that's been done to date on that has already answered that. I think it's going to be imperative for us to continue to make sure that we are, are pushing forward those recommendations that the board accepted of that hard, very deliberative and informed work that the task force did. And I, I think we're headed in that direction for sure.
Paul, I take you at your word. I trust you and have followed you over these years. And so when the conceptual plan comes before the Policy Committee or the DRC for map ID to for MAP ID 28 Wessex 100. And those folks do not propose anything that has affordable housing in it. And you have no leverage to get, then we'll have this discussion again.
Yep. Okay. And I want to be conscious of the time, you know, we're, we're pushing 6:30 already. So I'm not going to, you know, shut down the conversation, but I just want to, uh, be conscious of, of the time and everybody's schedules. Jenny, you had a comment?
Uh, yes, I just want to assure Frank that the future land use map questionnaire that is going to be put up, um, as part of this third round, does not tie changes in density to affordable housing, period.
I, I, I'm okay with what Tammy and Paul had to say about the questionnaire. I mean, they've answered that and I'm okay with that. We need to go through that process as long as we don't have self fulfilling prophecies.
All right. Any other, um, comments, uh, under, um, other items for discussion? Any other comments? If not, I'm, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to the January 6th Planning Commission meeting at 6:00 PM tomorrow.
You have one.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you all very much. This was a very productive session. Thank you.